Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
Good afternoon. Going to call this informational meeting a Tuesday, September 21st, 2021, to order. First, our committee reports. I'm going to call on Counselor Starr for the Multicultural Center Intergovernmental Board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We are excited at the Multicultural Center. We are down to a couple of finalists, and this morning at seven o'clock, we gave approval. The Board of Directors gave approval to the selection committee to make an offer to a new executive director. So depending on how those negotiations go, we'll have a a new director. So it's an exciting time to kind of get a restart and a refocus of exactly what the Multicultural Center's mission and purpose and services. We've had to put some programs on hold while we did that. But I think it's moving in the right direction, and it'll be exciting to have a new executive director on board shortly.
Great, exciting news.
Yeah, I know. You want me to tell you who it is, and I can't do that yet at this point.
I do not. I will wait.
I want to tell you, but I can't.
I'll wait for the public announcement. Thank you. The Urbanized Development Commission, the UDC, I have Counselors Breckie, Kylie, Nitschert, and Starr. Anybody want to raise their hand to give a report? All right, we'll just keep going.
Counselor Kylie was out of town, so it'll have to be one of the other members.
Oh, I, yes, I can do just the really quick version. There were a couple of letters of support that the UDC put together for both Brandon and Crooks for a transportation amendment for projects within their city limits. There was also a update of our coordinated Public Transit Human Services Transportation Plan Annual Progress Report by Mr. Trebelcock and then Jim Feeney, who's the executive director. So lots of updates, lots of projects. It's at that time of the year as we're finishing up projects and amendments and moving money around to be able to do that. So that's the quick version.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to council remarks. Anybody? Well, I would just like to say that Friday night, I spoke to the MIA PIW recognition ceremony that was held out at Veterans Park, and that was very moving. And a lot of people there that were trying to remember relatives and friends that were no longer with us for, they didn't come back. So that was on Friday, and I'm sure we all realized that something special was going on. So that was a very nice ceremony that I attended and spoke at. We'll move right into our presentations. We have one very great presentation on the schedule. We always love to hear from Sean Pritchard about our finances.
Good afternoon, council. I'm here to present today the August monthly financial report for you. So we'll get kind of digging right in here. First, looking again at the labor force, which is one of the first items that we take a look at here as part of the monthly report. As you can see here, our July unemployment was up about six and a half percent if you were to compare that with the average of 2019. So we're actually up about eight percent over the same time last year, but we were down at this point last year. So if you kind of look at where we are relative to 2019, we are seeing some growth there at about a three percent year-over-year growth in the labor force. And you do see employment following, and labor force following the same trend. So it is positive to see some some growth occurring within that area. As far as unemployment, we came in at 2.2%, still very low for July of 2021 compared to a statewide average of 2.7% and a national unemployment rate of 5.7%. Inflation continues to be at a higher level, driven in part by the energy sectors and some part food as well. We were at 5.3%, which was very consistent at with 5.4% the previous month. So we're still seeing elevated trends there. And again, it is driven in large part by the energy sector. Of course, the energy was negative for a good part of 2020, so seeing it elevated in 2021. But that seems to be in large part the driving force here for most of the growth that you're seeing in inflation. You also see food costs consistently about one to two percent higher than they were from what we were experiencing before the pandemic. If you remove food and energy from the equation, then general inflation for all other goods is hovering around four percent overall. Consistent with previous month, we continue to have, be in a record-setting pace in terms of building permit valuations. Through August, we were at approximately $725 million, and that's about $315 million ahead of last year, or about a 77% increase and almost a 50% increase over the year before, which was 2019. Still driven in large part by the multifamily sector, which makes up about 50% of that increase. They're up about $165 million. Commercial additional and remodels are up about $85 million. New residential, so your single-family homes and your townhomes, are also up about $60 million. Manufacturing's up $40 million. The only thing that still remains down is kind of those retail outlet mall-type centers, which were down for most of this, most all of this year as well as last year. As you look at the individual family units, again, not surprising to previous months, year-to-date, we remain in a positive position in terms of the number of units being permitted. Through August, we had 638 single-family units that were permitted, which is about a 43% increase over last year, or about 192 more units. And then in totality, the multifamily sector has about 1,479 units that have been permitted thus far through this year compared to 578 last year. In total, through August, we've had about 2,400 units of housing that have been permitted. That is equal to the last two years combined at this time of year. So the last two years combined is is less than the amount that we permitted so far in 2021 when you look at the level of the apartments that have been in particularly permitted. Sales tax collections, month over month, if you compare them to 2020, we're up 19.4% in August. That relates to July transactions here in the community. But again, we try to take more of a comparative look at 2019 as a more consistent pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic normalized year. But even from that respect, we are still up 17% compared to where we were two years ago at this time. And the 12-month rolling average is up, continues to increase. It's now at 11.1%. Same story with the entertainment tax collections, seeing positive movement there. There was a 23.4% increase over August of 2020. If you compare us to August of 2019, we're still up almost 19% from where we were. A big factor driving that is the lodging, the turnaround that we've seen in the lodging sector. And again, these relate to July transactions, so they were in a peak travel months here in the community. Restaurants make up about 50% of the taxable base for the entertainment tax. And similar to previous months, that's been positive, but that was up 24%. But lodging really accelerated, was up 27% in in terms of the amount of spending that was occurring within that sector that was, that was taxable. If you compare that to the first five months of this year, they were actually averaging negative 18%. So pretty significant change for the hospitality sector as well. As far as the industry-level data, data just for the general sales tax, overall, strong growth across the board. The strongest growth was in the sporting goods sector with a $15.4 million increase, remote retailer sales, which was up $12 million versus two years ago. Department stores and restaurants both up over $10 million apiece. So you're seeing a lot of those consumer-driven areas continuing to show strong growth overall. But really, there was, there was a lot of growth across all the sectors. I think maybe agriculture was a little bit back from where we were two years ago. But aside from that, everything else was was very positive. And far, as far as the lodging taxes, as we discussed, they saw significant improvement overall, even relative to two years ago. So obviously, they're going to see significant growth compared to where they were in the previous year because they had taken such a significant hit. But even if you compare us to where we were in 2019 in August, lodging, tax receipts were up 34% from that year. So very significant and robust improvement there. The interesting thing, again, to watch, as Terry alluded to in her presentation regarding the bid budget, is is what will happen in these kind of shoulder season and these fall-winter months as we go into, as the travel, the leisure travel sector tends to get beyond the summer months when you see the traveling impacts and what will happen with business and convention and meeting schedules there. Pretty much the same story also with the bid tax, not as robust a growth, only up about 3% from two years ago. So when you look at the lodging tax, the lodging tax is being driven in large part by rate structures for the hotels as opposed to the bid, which is $2 per room, which is driven more by occupancy. So but still seeing overall solid occupancies across the hospitality area. As we look at the year-to-date revenues overall, you can see that we are about 66% collected for our total budget. That compares to being 60% collected as of last year. And this, of course, also takes and sets aside any impacts of one-time funds that we received in either 2020 or 2021. So you just see those operational kind of components to that. The reason for the increase that you're seeing there, driven primarily by the increases in sales taxes that we've experienced here so far in 2021. And then as far as expenditures on that side of the equation, we are about 61% expended overall for the budget. That's pretty comparable to what we would expect for this time of year. Last year, we were at 59%, but we were also withholding a lot of funds and pulling back in part-time hiring as a result of the pandemic. So most of, all of our areas are pretty much in line with our expectations. The one that I would call out is one that you'll see a first reading on tonight, which is the supplement for fire rescue. There's a couple of supplements, one for fire rescue tonight, and there's one for transit as well. The first one, which Chief McElroy will be speaking, I believe, about this evening, primarily relates to overtime staffing, some impacts from hiring related to the pandemic. They're kind of in a hiring mode and some of the turnover that they had, but having to rely more on overtime. And so that's exceeding the savings on the payroll side. And so making an adjustment there based on what we're projecting for trends on fire rescue. And then transit, it's a conversion of their radio systems, dealing with some of the changes that are occurring with the state radio system as well. Lastly, I would point to page 16 of your monthly financial report. So we've inserted a new table into there that is going to be tracking one-time expenditures that were related to kind of the Sioux Falls for All for the most part. So these are primarily items that, over the course of the last 12 to 16 months, this council has approved as one-time funding, either related to funding that we had available as a result of the CARES Act or funding that's available as a result of the American Rescue Plan Act. And some of these are not fully approved or appropriated by the council yet because they are in years 23 and 24. But they're all detailed here, so you can see the layout exactly of of kind of what the conceptual plan was. Most of these funds have been committed to as a result of the supplements you approved for 2021 and the supplements you made to the 2022 budget. So you'll be able to track kind of how those are encumbered, committed, and expended here over the next several years. And with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Counselors, questions? Counselor Breckie.
Just a statement, and it doesn't have anything to do with this month's financials, but I did receive a couple of comments about the budget, and they were very positive, and I just wanted to pass them on to you. The comments were that it was so readable and user-friendly, and you got those comments from us, you know, you know, just harkening back to when it's just rows and rows of numbers, and people don't understand. You did such a nice job of how you presented it to us. But I just wanted you to know, I've had a couple of comments from individual citizens who just went online and looked at it and said, it's all right there. All those people that say they don't know what's going on, just go ahead. Right there, you can look at it, and you can understand it. It's all very clear what they're spending the money for. So just kudos to you and continue the good work with that. And I thank you for the extra graph.
I appreciate that. I defer a lot of that credit, honestly, to the staff, both in finance with, and also with the various departments. But we have truly worked very hard to make it a much more transparent document that is easily readable and where citizens can actually see where their funds and their tax dollars are being expended. So appreciate you for providing that feedback.
Counselor Rickson.
Thank you, Sean. Can you talk a little bit about, this weekend, I was at the event center. It was a really, really busy weekend in our city as a whole. And I don't know if the information is public yet, and I don't have the numbers as far as how amazing the event center did at their event this weekend with the Luke Combs concert. I was there and saw a lot of people there, and it was like something I've never really, truly experienced. And I've gone to a lot of events there. It was energetic to see, and I can only imagine what the sales were from that. I don't know if you can touch on that or not, or that they were good.
Yes. So I mean, it was good to see the opportunity to be able to have a full concert again. This concert had been rescheduled several times. I think that was exciting for many people there. I was not there, but I heard very many positive things about how exciting the atmosphere was there. So and it was exciting to see other things happening at the convention center and the arena and at the hardwood field, all at the same time. So there was a lot of fun stuff happening. The the food and beverage sales surprised, maybe a little surprisingly, but they beat the record by 25%. So they pretty much blew the record out of the waters. And so it was really good. It was good because obviously we've taken our hits with the entertainment center last year as a result of it having to be closed and then concerts being postponed as a result of COVID. So it is very positive to see some good things happening, especially for our third-party vendor, Spectra. I mean, Spectra, we don't pay them a management fee. It's feast or famine based on what they're able to sell. We get a portion of the sales on the food and beverage side, and them being able to to kind of weather through this and come back out of this in a better place. They they instituted a new point-of-sale system to make it faster, hopefully for people, and have a better experience when they're getting food and beverage there. So it gave them the opportunity to reinvest some funds there, but to rethink. They did some shifting on the concourses and stuff, too, to really try to make it a better, faster experience for people.
Yeah, the energy was amazing. And truly, I know they've taken some criticism for not having cash anymore, but it does speed the lineup really fast because they have registers all over. And people can still leave cash tips if they choose to, but that did speed up the process as well. If I can ask another question, kind of going a segue, and I should have probably given you more information on this. But being at the event center this weekend and knowing kind of some of our relationships that we have with other venues and management agreements, can you touch on the Sioux Empire Community Theater a little bit? Where are we with that amount that's still owed? I know there's still a looming debt that has been sitting there for quite some time, and I'm kind of curious where we are with that.
So we, we do still have an outstanding receivable. So for the event center, that pretty much equates back to probably four or five years ago, when the community theater was probably in a different financial position than they are presently. And so our management agent, which is ASM Global, used to be SMG, they are really responsible for managing that credit on our behalf. So this occurred, you know, obviously, five years ago. So they've managed through that, trying to work through repayment system that is, I guess, one that can be agreeable on both sides of the equation.
Right.
Now, they did suspend payments during the pandemic. I mean, obviously, there was impacts with community theater. They couldn't put on shows. Theaters weren't open. Our Orpheum wasn't open in for a certain period of time. So reflective of that, they did postpone that repayment for a while. They have entered into a new agreement essentially for starting to make larger payments on that to pay it down more quickly than it maybe has been previously.
So can you tell me what the balance is? If you don't have it, I have it. I'm, I mean, I ask it semi-rhetorically.
It's in the $60,000 range.
Yeah, $66,000 is what it's still owed. Do you know if there's been, I guess, any, and it's interest-free. I mean, I would love an interest-free loan, I'm not going to lie. That'd be great to not have to pay interest on my car or whatever I owe. But and I know we want to be good stewards of allowing them to get that paid back. However, it really circumvented the city council. We didn't appropriate the money. We didn't forgive it. And I know that relationship was done between a management agreement and somebody else. So based on a little research I did, is grants and loans that they received was over $418,000 they received this last year. So I know COVID did play a huge effect, but they received $418,000. They owe us $66,000 and are choosing to maybe not just settle up. And for me, as a city council, we, we did not appropriate that money. It circumvented us. We, we hand it to people all the time. If you bake the cake and tell us, just assume that we're going to pay for it. And in this instance, it's exactly what that is, is using our capital in lieu of paying their own obligation off. And so one of the questions that I have for you, and this goes back really 20 years, there's been issues over the 20 years. I looked at old Argus Leader articles over the last week, kind of looking into this a little bit. And it really sparked the garbage hauler issue. Again, pre, probably most of us, I think Rick and I were the only two on the city council at that time, where there was a garbage hauler that got in debt over $100,000 and lost their right to do business. And so we put in an ordinance that said, if your X amount of dollars overdue, you lose your license or your right to, I don't know exactly what it says, but you can't use the garbage, you can't haul your garbage there anymore. And so my question to you is if it would be feasible for us as a council to either pass some sort of resolution or ordinance, or even update our management agreements to making sure we're never in this situation again? Because it's not, it's, again, it just circumvented the whole budgetary process from the city council. And even if it says, hey, if you're 120 days past due and over $1,000, you can't use the facility any longer until you settle your debt. I don't want any counselors or counselors, council members or administration, and I know this really predates all of us up here, to have to go through of collecting a debt again and again, especially when they're sitting on $418,000.
So I guess I would, I appreciate your concerns in relation to the debt, and I obviously kind of can see the concerns relative to maybe some of the funds that were received in grant money over the last year and the fact that we're still holding out for our outstanding receivable to be paid for services that were rented. I think you alluded to the fact that it's kind of like a non-authorized appropriation, which, to a certain extent, that's what's created as a result of something like this. Because, you know, they, it was rented for a specific service or rented facility, and then you had challenges with repayment. And that happens with, you know, many different vendors. But, you know, you try to work with those individuals over time and and have it repaid in full. This city, even though we are responsible for the accounts or we have some custodial responsibility for the accounts for which ASM Global operates for on our behalf, it reflects on our books, our financial statements in terms of their net equity position. But they are responsible through this, their five-year agreement with the City of Sioux Falls to manage the facility, and that means manage all aspects of the facility, whether that's agreements, vendors, contracts, as well as renting the facility and handling any financial responsibilities as a result of that. So we continue to have discussions in relation to that, but the responsibility for managing this old receivable is with them. And we had talked about, you know, when, when the Washington Pavilion took over the Orpheum, whether that debt should be transferred to the Washington Pavilion. But it couldn't be at that time because it was our debt. We would have, the way we structure our agreements made it very difficult. As where, where we might have an opportunity to have impact on this, I think you referenced is the management agreements, which for the Pavilion, ASM Global, and Spectra will all be up next year and back before this council for discussion. And so that could be something that could be contemplated as part of that management agreement, whether there's some additional language that could be inserted that suggests that, you know, we may not rent our facilities if if we're indebted to a certain amount with this.
Right. And I think that.
Because it just makes good business sense to do.
Right. And I think that's good stewards of of the taxpayers that didn't maybe choose that appropriation, or this council never chose that. And, you know, as I was looking at some of this, I mean, this isn't, we've done it in the past. And when I say we, the city has forgiven debt all the way back to 2001, two, three, when it was Sioux Falls Playhouse, and it's changed hands a few times. And so this isn't new. And I mean, we certainly have a history of 20 years of of doing this, that I don't want to fall into this again. And before that $418,000 is gone, boy, I'd like to settle up our debt with that. And so if there's any urge or nudge or anything that can be done, and I know Mike Cruzen took, he's the new guy in, and this is something that was on his plate before he even started, same with Darren, same with you, same with all of us. But if there's any nudging that we can do to say, hey, let's settle this up before we repeat history again for the last 20 years, I think that would be, speaking on my behalf, would be a, a good thing to do because we've forgiven hundreds of thousands of dollars over the years and also purchased the Orpheum. That's how the city got the Orpheum is because it couldn't be afforded anymore. And so the city decided to purchase the Orpheum and then forgave, I think it was $363,000 or something like that. So I would be a huge advocate. If we can get it in the management agreement, I think that would be great. I'm not interested in reopening them, but I'm interested in getting that debt paid off as soon as possible. I just think it's the right thing to do before my time is done on this council. Thank you. Sorry to go down to squirrel moment. Thanks for putting all this together. It's exciting to see the numbers come back. It's exciting to see, you know, industries really recover after the last year because it has been tough on a lot. And I think those CARES Act dollars and and the grants have helped a lot of people get back on their feet. So it's been good. Thank you.
Other council members' questions? Counselor Kylie.
It's, it's more of an observation. It's regarding the, your first slide, labor force and employment, and then what you also have on the inside cover of your report. I mean, there's a lot to be made of right now, the help-wanted signs that we see all across, across the city. But I, but I noticed that, I mean, our, our labor force, and I'm going to compare this to July of 19, pre-COVID, our labor force has increased 7,000 in that period of time, but, but so is our number of individuals employed. So it's still keeping, still keeping pace. So the, the help-wanted signs, do you see that as a result? Because the number of employed is keeping pace with, with the force available. Is that a product of, in your estimation, is that a product of just more jobs available out in the community, more opportunity?
The scarcity, or the.
Yes.
For people wanting to have. I do. I think it's driven by the growth. The, the employment to labor force here, I take it for what it's worth. I think there are some extrapolated numbers that are done on a national basis, right, to get to these numbers for our community. I think sometimes they take national trending and statewide trending, and then they push it down into a metropolitan community, and it doesn't exactly, maybe mesh exactly. So I think this is a good indicator of where the trending is in totality. But in terms of total reliance on these numbers, that they are absolutely correct to our community. Because I watched these employment numbers relative to the insured unemployment rates during the pandemic, and they didn't always jive. And I would probably trust the insured unemployment rates a little bit more than I would maybe some extrapolated trend data, just because that was actual number of people in our community and in our state, essentially, that were claiming unemployment. And they didn't, you know, it tended to be about three, three and a half percent below typically what you saw. So yes, they followed each other's trending. But I, I don't get overly reliant. I think this is a good indicator of where we're trending in totality. I think the growth, sorry, long answer to your question, but I think a part of it is our growth is exceeding the, the labor force that we're growing at. And I think a big piece of that is the lagging effect of making sure we're getting residential housing units available for people to live here. And if you hear one thing, it's that people are looking for places to live. I mean, I got a solicitation in my mailbox the other day about trying to sell my house, right? And I got somebody that wants to buy your house, and it's probably just a sales pitch overall, right? But that's, that's the first time in seven years I've received that solicitation. It's indicative of what's happening in the market right now.
Which, which just again, I guess, thank you, because my point is, it just goes to show that this council cannot shift its focus from development of workforce and housing. They go hand in hand. We, we have to have a workforce, but you also have to have housing for that workforce. So it's extremely important that this council continues to focus on those two areas. And yes, the, the unemployment rate of 2.2% currently, that, that reflects that basically those that are able to work are working. So it's, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions? I'll just make one comment quickly, Sean. I greatly appreciate you tracking the allocations that we've made with the R funding and the CARES Act funding so that we can follow easily. I appreciate you being proactive to keep us informed and really do that. Being no other questions, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
At this time, we move into public comment. If there's anybody here that would like to comment on anything we've covered today, now is the time. Seeing none. Counselor Jensen.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to enter into executive session for consulting with legal counsel or reviewing communications from legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation or contractual matters pursuant to SDCL 125, 2, 3.
Second, Erickson.
Have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote on that. Do we have to take a roll call? I'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in foe, say nay. That motion is carried. Thank you very much. We're going to move into executive session. I'd asked for the council chambers to be. I'd ask for the council chambers to be cleared, please.